... monthly April meeting to order on this date, April 23rd, 2018. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then immediately following the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like everybody to stand for a silent invocation and then shortly after that, we will resume our meeting. Trustee Sliva, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liz, could you please vote over?
Bryce?
Here.
Batsu?
Here.
Ashman?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Skornica?
Here.
Sliva?
Here.
And Wilson with notice.
We have an agenda out in front of us and presented to us, I would say, in a timely fashion for us to review. Are there any questions or anything that anyone would want to add or talk about before we move to a motion for the agenda?
Where are we addressing the letter?
The letter was given to me last minute and what I'm asking council to consider, and then we can do this as a group, is decide how we want to do that, but the letter just for the public was from our previous village manager and we have some, just an open item that we need to address with him to put closure to his services. So this was just put on our table tonight and we were not aware of that. So what I'd like council to consider is that our personnel committee go back, get the information that was provided and recommended to council for John Lyon's extended services to help bridge the gap when we did not have a village manager. And then, once the Personnel Committee reviews that, I would ask that we bring the recommendation from Personnel Committee back to council. I think we don't have to wait another month to tell John, but I think we can do this via email, which we've done in the past, and then if we can get consensus via email, I think we can put closure to it. Now, that's my recommendation that...
But where are we addressing it?
We can put it, if you want to add it to the agenda. Let's put it as... No, it's not new business. I would say unfinished business and I would make it E.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion by trustee Skornica and supported by trustee Bryce. And I believe that would be a... All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next on the agenda, under item number five, we have two sets of meeting minutes. One was from our regular scheduled meeting scheduled March 26th. That was our regular scheduled meeting. And then the second meeting, we had a special joint collaboration meeting that was held on March 29th. So what I'd like to do, because they're two individual meetings that will do two separate motions...
Make a motion to approve the regular council minutes, March 26th, 2018.
Support. And I will make a motion then to... Before that happens, our host. So we have a motion by trustee Bryce, seconded by trustee Robinson. Are there any other further discussions with that motion at all? There being none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm sorry?
Opposed, nay.
Okay. So we have... Could you, for the record, trustee Sliva opposes the regular scheduled meeting minutes. Now, did you want to discuss why you opposed it or was there anything specific?
No, there has been an ongoing discussion, so... I should have acknowledged, me and you was aware of my opposed, so I didn't see no reason to discuss it any further.
Okay, that's fine. And then, so Liz, do you need the trustee names? Are you good with...
I'm good.
Oh, very good, alright. Alright, so then we have the second joint collaboration meeting minutes.
I just want to... Those have to be approved by all the parties, alright? So I would just suggest adding, New Business B, where it says the... My table, "And was completed." First page, New Business B.
I'm sorry?
First page, New Business B. And then what? As was completed.
You missed one, I understand. So we are on five, the... Oh.
A.
I'm sorry.
Was completed. And that would go for C as well, the first sentence I was suggesting. Well, then A would need to be presented. I mean, this is what, isn't that what they all say? Where A would have to say presented, or, oh, I'm sorry, present, no, I'm sorry, presented.
So did you, Liz, get that amendment? So if it was under New Business, item B, can you add it was completed?
Right, and C, what was C? What was C? It was completed.
Okay, that's a separate amendment.
Yeah. The first sentence.
Okay, so there's still a few... Sorry, did we have a motion? We don't have a motion yet on the amendment, the joint meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the joint village organizational meeting on March 29th, 2018, as amended.
I guess I'll support it. Okay, we have a motion by trustee Skornica, supported by trustee Batsu. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have accepted items and that item is item A, Treasurer's Report. Any questions or any regards to the Treasurer's Report? I see that we, there was an additional chart and some additional information there that was different from the previous report. It looks like there's two line graphs, one for general fund and that covers 331, 2014 all the way through 331, 2018. Basics are less, over years, five years, trend for general funds, major streets and local streets.
My question probably would be directed to the manager's break. Has that transition of the two credit unions, has that occurred yet or is that in the process?
No, not yet. I kind of waited for Monday until, or today to hear if anybody had any comments regarding that. We're just going to move forward with it. It's based on village financial policy, it's within our purview, so let's move forward with it. It'll need an additional, back the napkin math, an additional roughly $2,000 a year for the village.
Perfect. Any other discussion on this first, or the, I'm sorry, the Treasurer's Report? There being none, we'll go to item number seven, which is dispersments. So for those out in the gallery, we have a dispersment report that ran, the date range is March 15th, 2018 to April 14th, 2018.
Should we, be a motion on that? There's no motion?
On the dispersment? Yeah, I'm just explaining to...
I don't think there's a motion.
Not yet.
Normally I would have typed one out, I think is what she's saying. I was just making sure.
Yeah, we definitely need a motion, yeah. But usually there's a discussion, usually it's a discussion first.
Do we need a motion?
We can do that.
I make a motion to pay our bills for what the March, for... March 15th through April 24th. Is that correct?
April 14th.
That's 14. In the amount of $17,556.95.
Support. So we have a motion by trustee Bryce, supported by trustee Batsu. Discussion, questions?
At number 18, are we still pursuing the water pool repurchase? I know that was a discussion and...
Eighteen? I did pull together some estimates, I'm not sure that I discussed you or was that with John that I didn't discuss that last year. Okay, I had previously discussed it with John, so maybe I'll bring it back to the table with Bill.
Thank you.
That's in lieu of 13, because that was you?
Mm-hmm. I mean, there are hundreds of dollars to buy one, we're renting it.
Yeah.
Twenty dollars a month. There should have been, yeah, agree.
Any other questions in regards to dispersments? There's a little bit more detail on the opposite side of our dispersments for our legal assistance. Broken down there to a couple areas. Any other discussion? There being none, we'll have a roll call vote, please, Liz.
Batsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Dispersment motion passes. The next item on our agenda is public comments, this is for agenda items only, so if there are any of you that would like to talk about anything on our agenda tonight, now would be the time to do that. Go ahead, ladies first. Please, again, state your name and...
My name is Lynda Hayes. I live at 690 Oakwood Road and I, this isn't really an agenda, but it is what it is. It's an apology for my outburst at the last month's meeting. I let my frustration take over, there's no excuse for rudeness and I especially apologize to you, Kim.
All's forgiven, I don't even remember where I went.
Thank you, though.
But thank you for, that's an apology, but like I said, I don't even remember where I went.
Hi, my name is Carl Hayes. I live at 690 Oakwood Road. And concerning the agenda items, we just talked about the dispersments and most committee meetings I've been to, they, I mean, not village meetings, they have itemized lists of what our dispersments are, what's going out, where, right? Could we get an itemized list, you know, along with our agenda for like the monthly meetings?
I don't, did we post that, the dispersments or...
Typically, it's not required to be posted, but it's public record and it's not nothing, there's nothing hidden about it, so there wouldn't be a problem.
I understand what was hidden, but it would be handy to have.
Be after, typically it's after.
Right on with the agenda.
Yeah, I think the only concern would be is if there was an error or council found a discrepancy within that dispersment, then you might have something that might not be 100% accurate because we approve them here after our review, right? So the only concern would be is that there might be some changes or amendments possible.
Well, you can put that, you know, open.
So, yeah, we can consider, we can consider that.
That would be, that would be a good addition to our agenda sheet, you know. We're dispersing $17,500, it'd be nice to know where. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just, just a side note, if we were to move on that, Bill, we would want to make some type of caveat on the posting that it is subject to change based off of council approval or something to that point, if we're going to do something like that, alright? Okay. Anyone else have agenda items to talk about out there? Now's the time to do it. Alright. There being no other public comments on agenda items, we'll move on to item number nine, which is New Business. I do believe, Bill, you had brought up the fact that our DPW is in need of a new tractor and I do know that you did some legwork in getting a couple bids and you narrowed down the search, so you've got, you've got two bids out here. One is from, for a Kubota tractor and the other one is for a John Deere tractor, right? And you also have a recommended motion. So before we move on with the motion, I would like to have some discussion around the two bids first. One was very detailed and when I say very detailed, I thought the Kubota bid was very detailed in that it specified a cab, windshield wipers for the cab, heat for the cab, where the John Deere didn't specify a cab, heated windshield wipers, lights for the cab. So are we getting a cab with the John Deere tractor?
Yeah, it's on there, matter of fact.
Examples, dapples?
It's apples, dapples, it's heated, it's, you know, got the wipers, it's got the lights. Because typically the, yeah, it's, I think it's on the first page or something, it says cab.
Drop on cab, I see, I missed it when I, when I went through it. Okay, so it is apples, dapples and I'm all about John Deere. So we have a recommended motion, are there any other questions in regards to the two votes?
Where did this replacement fall on our list for the CIP, I believe?
Oddly enough, it's kind of funny because on the CIP that I had, that I think was generated by Dave, it didn't appear on the list, but I found a 2003 CIP that said the tractor was supposed to be replaced in 2009. So we actually got 10 more years of use than what the 2003 CIP said we should have, so it was not on the list of...
Is that the one that maybe Bob did? Bob and...
Bob and Dave, I think, did together.
Well, the 2009?
Oh, no, the 2000.
If I recall correctly, Bob and, oh, Larry? So the...
No, it was actually done in 2003. So it was Kawai and whoever was running DPW at the time.
So it was not on there?
No, it was not on.
Just paid a replacement.
I do seem to remember a fairly large, major expense to repair the tractor, I don't know how many years back, and maybe that just belonged to the...
They, Bob said they were able to bleed some more life out of it. They spent about $3,500, it seems like is the number, don't quote me on that one, but I believe that's what Bob said. And then when we took it over this time, the engine was totally blown and the, it was a rusty, it was an old metal frame and the frame was rusted, so it would have cost in excess of $10,000 just to try to get it running again, so...
Alright, and then I do seem to remember I read something about a $1,200 credit, basically that's taking, basically recycling or the tri-county is going to give us $1,200 for the...
$1,200 for the old snowplow and the tractor. We're going to retain the old broom, even though it doesn't fit, it's still got relatively good life, so we're going to try to sell that on eBay or something to generate some additional revenue.
Do you know what this would have cost without going through my deal? Are they, you know, the residents may not get to know that we'll be...
My deal is basically, it's like factory direct to us in essence, and so this kit probably would have cost, gosh, I'm going to say, we're getting it for, you know, before the trade-in bidding, 23. And again, this is rough, but roughly 27, 28,000, so it would have been about 5,000 more at least.
Going through the my deal?
Yeah. And the good thing about my deal is we pay that, I think it's $180, $180 a year, but that, that takes care of all your requirements of, you know, adding the three bid philosophy because they're actually doing the bidding for you and in addition to that, the advertising. So when they advertise the bid out to all these, you know, companies, whether you're buying a tractor or you're buying a truck through them, it's, takes care of those, those legal requirements. So it's a good investment.
So that being said, would we use my deal and sell that broom?
Probably not, it probably, there's MI bid, which is, we could probably put it in MI bid for a sale or there's a, there's a couple other areas, Facebook, Craigslist, eBay, there's several different places in the private market.
Liz, isn't, the council maybe recall too, where we bought that salt box?
That's no...
Wasn't that on my deal?
The farm goes with it all the time. It was from the MI bids.
MI bids?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did also, I know I didn't include that there, but I did check to see if we could find something, a low hour used tractor to...
Okay. So we have a recommended motion.
And we even get a warranty with that as well, we were discussing that earlier. It's like six years, six years powertrain engine.
Is that your motion?
Yes. To approve the purchase of the John Deere 1025R subcompact utility tractor, a 47-inch two-stage snowblower and 52-inch rotary broom at a cost not to exceed $21,904.62 and payable from DPW new equipment line, item 101441977.000.
Support. So we have a motion by trustee Sliva, supported by trustee Robinson. I think, I think I'd like to do a roll call vote on this, please.
Ashman?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I'd like to make sure that Bob knows how thankful we are that he always does wonderful with everything we have and that's another great example of extending the life twice what it was expected to be and I'm sure he will with this one as well.
And that will be delivered as well, like who's delivering or they'll deliver it?
Yep.
And how soon do we expect to take delivery of that?
They have one in stock, so as soon as I call them tomorrow, they can get her over here.
Her next week's snow, is it?
No, 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 no. No.
I hear in a hurry.
I was trying to get those other piles melted. Alright, good. So the next item under New Business would be item B and that has to do with the Cedar Schoolhouse Scrap Tire Grant Engineering Administration Contract. So that, Row Professional Services Company did submit a breakdown on services for this job. We do have the breakdown, they submitted it to us. Again, I get it, out of format wise, do we want to motion before we discuss or can we discuss before we motion because I did have some questions in regards to the...
Typically, you're supposed to motion first, then go into discussion.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll follow that routine.
Okay. I'll read the motion. To approve the proposal received from Row Professional Services for Construction Administration and Construction Engineering for the Cedar Schoolhouse Scrap Tire Grant Paving Project in the amount not to exceed $14,712.
Support. So we have a motion by trustee Sliva, supported by trustee Batsu. We'll open it up for discussion. So my, my discussion on this is typically, when you receive a quote, the hourly rate, the hourly rate of services here, obviously, there's, there's some profit built in there, right? Because nobody gets paid $150 an hour and, and, and so for me, if I were to ask Row again for another quote, I'd, okay, give us your hourly rate, give us, you're no kidding, hours for that person and then give us your management fee too. Because if it's a management fee, your management fee is typically profit, right? Why not spell it out there instead of hiding it in the hourly rate? So I think it's important for us to know, especially when it comes to engineering services, how much we're being charged for the profit versus the labor to do the work. So, okay, I'm not saying it's spoiling this one, but I think moving forward, I think it would help council understand how Row is in terms of competition with the engineering firms out there that are out there now. And they shouldn't, they shouldn't hide it, it's all public knowledge anyways, right? So that's my thought. I think also, Bill, you had mentioned that usually, I thought these were always combined in the total loss, even though you said that it was pretty close, you know, by your estimation from others, but isn't that always part of...
Typically, typically the construction administration, that's why I told them in the future when they do these projects, the construction administration should be folded into the grant application so that...
That's what...
And when you look at the particular grant that we received on here, they allow 15, the MDA or Scrap Tire Post, allow 15% for administration into the grant, so it's a legal expense of 50%. This is a 50-50 grant, I believe, and so 50% of that cost of the administration of the contract should be folded right into that thing so that, you know, it's just another expense like tar and rubber and, or, you know, and digging up the road. The engineering portion, the actual testing, staking, surveying, typically that does fall outside the, it's considered an engineering phase and typically that expense kind of falls outside of what the norm... falls outside of what the normal grant, like, like we just went through the thing with the bridges here at the last meeting to where they're paying 100 or 95% of the actual construction cost, but we had to pay 100% of the engineering cost in that particular grant, so. Yeah, so the engineering portion, that's why I had them go back. If you recall, we'd have got one that was just kind of a big lump and it said $14,700. And I said, no, you need to go back and fold that into the two buckets so that we make sure we get credit for that one bucket in the, so roughly.
35.
3,500 bucks will come out of the grant money.
Very good. Any other discussion? So we'll take a roll call vote, please, Liz.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skorinka?
Yes.
Sliwa?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Motion passes. The next item under new business, item C, which is the water softener purchase for the old mill museum. Bill, it looks like you did seek out a quote, actually two quotes.
There's only two.
Yeah, there's only three there.
Oh, saving paper. All right, so there's three quotes out here. Did you want to walk us through the suggested motion and why Trinmountain or is it?
Yeah, roughly they are, they are 300. I went new to new, I did get one used quote, but the used quote was two things. Number one, the guy who gave us the used quote never came out to look at the job. So it was kind of telephone quote and the warranty was only, I think it was three years on here, three years, one year parts and labor. So I did go new to new. It's very low volume, so it should last the old mill almost forever, I would think. And the quoted warranty from Trinmountain, they were $300 cheaper than the other ones. And in addition to that, there's a 35-year warranty on the equipment. So we should never have to mess with this again, so.
All right, and then before we move on to the motion, would there be any need, and maybe this is overkill, for a charcoal filter there too for drinking water? Is that just mainly for potable water or are we?
This is mainly just for the, you know, the, the water down there is so hard and rusty that we're going to ADA compliant bathroom, so we're going to replace the toilet and replace the sink. But literally, when you run water through there, the toilet turns orange within a few days. So this is more for just kind of keeping the bathroom and the smell out. I mean, you walk in the place, it smells kind of like rust when you walk in there, so. But I like your idea. And I jotted it on our.
So we have a suggested motion and your.
To approve the purchase of a water softener from Trinmountain Water Conditioning, per quote dated 4/13/2018, in the amount not to exceed $1,648, payable from Historic Properties Building and Ground Maintenance Line Item 101265776.000.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Sliwa, supported by trustee Skorinka. Any further discussion? There being none, can we have a roll call, please?
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skorinka?
Yes.
Sliwa?
Yes.
And motion passes.
Just one set of, I see on this other estimate that says remove a old unit. There's not an old unit there.
No, there's none.
That's why I said the guy didn't come out once.
Oh, it's this one. I didn't realize, because this one, I thought it was one that we never seen in our life.
Right, so, all right, good catch, though.
Also, Bill, would you like to know the donation?
Oh, yeah, he's going to make a $250 donation to revamping the old unit.
Who's that?
Try Mountain.
Try Mountain.
Is he? Oh, how wonderful.
Yeah, it's on his, it's on his estimate.
Okay, no, that's, that's wonderful.
No, that's, that's notable, I mean, he's a local.
He's local, giving back.
Center. No, that's, that's a good, and he was really, really helpful. I mean, when I called him, he was like, boom, right on. And that's what you need. Very good deal.
So moving on, next item is item B. We have, this item is mental health resolution for Mental Health Awareness Month. The village has been asked to partner up with the Oakland County Health Network and pass a resolution in support of Mental Health Awareness Month. So we have been given a memo from the Oakland, Oakland Community Health Network. It was addressed to President Wills requesting this participation. I think it, I think it's very beneficial. I think we all need to recognize it and so there, there's been a resolution prepared and I don't know if that Liz or Bill prepared the resolution or would it just come part.
It just plug and play.
Is it?
Yeah. From.
Okay, good, so. But because I think it's so important, I think somebody, if they don't mind volunteering reading the resolution out loud for the public, so they're aware that, what this resolution means for the month? Somebody want to volunteer?
Yeah, I will. To approve a resolution in support of Mental Health Awareness Month for the month of May 2018.
Support.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion by trustee Sliwa and supported by trustee Bryce. But prior to, prior to go into a vote on that, I'd like to have someone actually read the resolution.
I'll read it. Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2018, Resolution Number 2018-0423. Whereas mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses, and whereas one in five Americans experiences a mental health illness that requires treatment at some point in their lives, and whereas one in 10 children has a serious emotional disturbance that, if untreated, can lead to school failure, physical illness, substance abuse, jail, and even suicide, and whereas May 10 has been designated the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and whereas stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illness often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life, and whereas mental illness is a biologically based brain disorder that cannot be overcome through willpower and is not related to a defect in a person's character or intelligence, and whereas mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people with mental illness to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential, and whereas mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life, and whereas the Oakland Community Health Network and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strength in communities. Now therefore be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network and the Village of Ortonville hereby recognizes May 2018 as Mental Health Month. OCHM calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness to promote recovery.
Thank you very much for reading that, Colleen. Again, I think it's very, very well warranted. I think it is, I think it's a great initiative to bring that out at least once, once a month every year. So we do have, we don't do any roll calls, so we'll do all in favor of this resolution. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So we're contacting them to come to the main meeting to be presented?
Yes, we can have them come in to.
That's the letters.
Our main meeting?
Sure.
Is that, is that the plan then, Bill, that to contact them, we have them come in in May? Okay, perfect. The next and last item under new business, we have item E, which is the approval of annual financial audit. So at this point, item E, we're talking about Stevens and.
Karinovic?
And Tucker, right? So it looks like a, the proposed three-year.
They're actually the current people that we have who've changed their names, the company divided. This is actually the same people we currently have, so it'd be renewing the contract for another three years.
Could, what was the old name and now the new name we know?
Glad you asked that.
I can't remember the old name either.
No?
No, Abraham.
Oh, yeah.
Abraham Gaffney.
It is on the last page. So just for, I'm just saying for the record that we, it is good to keep continuity to a certain point with financial audits. I mean, every now and then, I think you do want to switch up just to make sure that, that who we are paying is, hasn't gotten complacent in any way in terms of reviewing, but it would be nice to at least show that there is continuity, in this case by switching names, but still yet carrying the same people that were doing the services prior to, right?
Right.
How, let's see, what was their estimate three years ago? Over here.
They included that, it's on the last page. They were six, 62, and 64. Now it's 67, 70, and 73. They are also going to assist us with the new chart of accounts, regulations that are coming out where the state is asking you to align your accounts in certain big buckets so that they know when they're auditing you that you are properly reporting to the state.
Is making it easier for them?
Yes.
So isn't that built into the BSNA already?
No, in my opinion. You still got to get it there and the humorous thing about it is that the report that's going to come about to assure that you have it in the right buckets doesn't come from us, it comes from your auditor. So that, I can't remember the number of the report right now, but you just get it, but that report is what they're trying to drive to make sure it's apples to apples across the whole state, so.
So is there a reason why, I mean, I understand every year things go, so I, you know, I understand, but I mean, a lot of times it doesn't always go, like what's, other than just, you know, like Koa, right? What, why, why is it going down?
Talking.
What supports that?
And I talked, and I talked to these people because they actually submitted another bid for the chart of accounts thing, and I said, no, you need to take care of that as part of this. And it's basically the complexity, their explanation was that, you know, cost of living part of it, but complexity of changes within state law every year.
And keep it up with those changes.
Keep up those changes.
And just to, just to note to be sure that we are, let's say compliant, because we passed our audit very well last time, but there were some recommendations, making sure that all of the recommendations have been completed and are now part of our process, our financial processes, right?
I'll have to dig into them.
Just to be sure that everything, all the recommendations, so we don't wait, we don't want to keep seeing them again. We want to, there was a CAP, a corrective action plan of some sort, we want to make sure that those have been fully institutionalized and processed, documented.
That's a good point, because I know there were recommendations. I don't know that they were spelled out that absolutely need to get them done, but certainly I think recommendations are made to.
To.
Keep them straight.
To improve.
Yeah, yeah.
Just want to be sure that all that's meant on.
And that's very important, especially the smaller, the smaller you are, the more the likelihood that people wear multiple hats, so that, you know, you'd think that that would be less likely to have problems, but typically, smaller is more difficult when it starts coming to some of the financial things. That's a very good point.
Okay.
All right. All right, so we have a motion. If the discussion is, we have a motion out in front of us for item E. Anybody care to? Get that motion.
To approve the annual financial audit contract for three years with Stevens, Karinovic, and Tucker PC as presented.
We have a motion by trustee Steva, supported by trustee Batsu. I'd like to have the roll call, please, Liz.
Ashman?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skorinka?
Yes.
Sliwa?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Motion passes.
Just want to add, do we need to add in there not to exceed, or should we, per contract, which the contract says not to exceed?
As presented would probably dot that.
As presented, okay. Okay, that's fine.
And we, we just have to have, this is a matter of record every year, make sure that it doesn't go any higher than what was presented.
I might have missed a bit when they said they were going to do the audit this year. I missed that.
We will contact them tomorrow. They're, they're wanting to get it on schedule for August because they have to submit, probably mid-August, because they got to submit by September, or in September, excuse me.
All right, moving on to the next item. This is the item number 10. This is unfinished business and the first item under unfinished business is master plan. Do we have any updates there?
Just other than we had the joint meeting the last time, last Thursday, and they, based upon that feedback, we will then widen the scope and the plan for the next one is to have enlarged the stakeholder base and get the, you know, the general public involved, get city staff more involved, invited, and there has not been a date set for that yet, but we believe that that would be, what did they say, June? June for June?
I think so.
I believe.
So it, for me, it comes to no surprise, I've been critical of the process, right? And my biggest concern with the process is that at some point, council's going to be asked to approve a very large master plan. And I, I know the, the recent joint meetings that we've been invited to, some could make them, some could not. I do know that the last joint meeting, we were going to try to do our, everything in our power to get everybody to be at that meeting, but certainly I've made it known that I was going to be out of town and I think others have too, but, so my, my concern continues to be, okay, council's going to get blindsided at some point, not knowing what's in the master plan today up this far. And for me, this is, I'm just throwing this out for discussion and whether council agrees or not, but it seems to me that there should be a method with the master plan. Certainly, there's going to be, there should be a committee, right? None of which the council that I know of is on that committee for the master plan. Part of bridging that gap within communities and the building of a master plan is to have that joint working, not just to be invited and then see you later, but I'm talking about no kidding, as part of the master plan, establishing the master plan. And I have brought that up on several occasions and for whatever reason, you know, it's been decided that they're happy with the committee, whoever did that committee, the committee, the planning commission, do you know, is that the committee building this master plan?
Master plan is supposed to be driven out of the planning commission. They're, they're the main drivers of it theoretically. You know, they're supposed to drive it. You know, they're supposed to drive it. They're supposed to send it to this council for final approval. Now, obviously, you don't want to get in a ping pong match or, for lack of a better term, with it where, you know, there should be some, you know... We would hope that through these joint sessions and stuff, some basic guidelines or, for lack of a better term, maybe even some thou shalt nots or something, you know, are passed to the planning commission through some of these joint meetings to say, you know, if you're going to build an Empire State Building in the middle of Organville, we're not going to agree with that. So don't even bother and put it in the plan because we'll have to send it back to you. So that's what's supposed... That is what all these joint stakeholder meetings are supposed to be about. Right now, there's... There is an effective master... There is a master plan that we have that was done five years ago, I believe, or four years ago, five years ago. You know, the only requirement that I'm aware of is that they expect that your master plan is available for grants. Some things has to be re-upped every five years or re-looked at and re-examined. Doesn't mean it has to be, you know, redone from scratch. Doesn't mean that you have to throw out everything in your master plan. You know, it could be your master plan just needs to be tweaked. So there should be joint discussion going the whole time. And that's the purpose of trying to get these joint meetings together and make sure everybody's speaking up and saying, "These are the kind of things I'd like to see in the master plan."
So we're talking about continuity, right? So continuity between the council as a whole that approves the master plan and those who are putting it together. And at this point, I still believe there's a gap. Right now, we're still doing brainstorming. And, you know, these joint meetings are nothing more than a... What would be like... You know, where it goes from there, I'm not really sure. But for me, and I'm just talking out loud in front of council, it seems like there should be a method for the planning commission to break out the master plan in, say, infrastructure. What do we want in infrastructure? Bring it to council. Here's what we got. Housing. We're done with the housing. Bring it to council. Let's see what you got. Walkability. Bring it to council. See what you got. Roads. Put it together. Bring it to council. See what you got. So my point is, council should be updated on a constant basis, not just in these group sessions where we do this brainstorming. But we really don't know what's going to be in that plan until it's plopped on our desk. And typically, it's the weekend before a meeting. So my thought is, can we break the master plan out into sections? Get them developed for proposed approval by section? And at the end, we have a full-blown master plan that everyone is... No kidding, I remember that. Yeah, we approved that. But right now, my fear is, and I used the word term train wreck a while ago, I believe that we're going to be plopped a master plan that we're going to end up sending back because maybe there's some lack of continuity out there. So I'm just saying, for council's consideration, I think my thought is that we should have some type of system that systematically goes through and approves each phase of that or each stage of that master plan. Whether it's planned or not, I don't know. Having served on the planning commission for about 12 years, I've gone through one master plan. And when we went through it, there was a lot more involvement with all the officials or people of the village on the commission, on the council, on even the DDA. And I just think that, as evidenced by the master plan survey that went out, this council is not even aware that it was going out before it went out. It was like it had already been approved and sent out. And many of us found out by word of mouth or somebody that had actually got something in the mail or their school child had brought it home. That's not really, in my reading of how the master plan works in my remembrance, that's not how it's supposed to be. And when trustee Ashman said, "Train wreck", we'd like to avoid a train wreck and strictly communication. And that's not what we've had. And we are the one that write the check out to McKenna. And I would think that either McKenna or whoever was involved in making different questions out of it should have made a little bit of effort to come before this council and start... The master plan, the survey is the cornerstone of the plan. It's got the starting... That's the start point. And if you start it on the left foot, if you're a right-footed person, that's not good. I think it should be a little bit closer. So it's not for us to be able to, as councils, sit there and dictate what every question should be in the survey. But we all have thoughts. We all have things and methods on how to vet out the survey to make sure that when we get information back, we don't get and distrust that information. Right now, eighty-plus percent of the survey respondents had an average or median income of over $100,000. And we know that's not the median income of our community. So really, how accurate is that, right? So that's where it creates doubt. And no different, you know, with... You know, there should be a method to create continuity, eliminate doubt, especially when you're in a fact-finding mission. You want to make sure that the facts that are collected, we can stand by, the planning commission stand by, or the DDA can stand by, and certainly council, right? I get it. I was concerned about the method or the methodology around the survey, not necessarily the questions. But certainly, I had questions about some of the questions, did too. So now that, you know, at this point, it does create doubt for me as to, you know, how we use that information. Because I don't know that it's 100% accurate.
No. I also have a couple of thoughts. The income information was addressed. You have to remember that is 50% of the respondents, not 50% of our community. Many people do not have access nor interest or whatever their reasoning is not to take as their height. Therefore, this is only of those that responded. This is not of our community. This is the people that responded. So in the village, those that responded, that would be a correct number according to the information gathered. Another thing is, we have to remember we are council members before... I mean, citizens before were council members. So we can attend any planning commission meeting at any point. So when they were discussing all of the different survey questions, we could attend those as citizens, and we could have had input at any point in that. Some of us were well aware because we were reading the minutes and we were involved in the meetings. And I'm not talking about me specifically. I'm saying on council in general. The other thing is, we voted confidence in McKenna. We voted to hire them. We've hired them before. We're confident in their ability, or we went and hired them. So I don't like second-guessing something that hasn't even begun nor been put in front of us. I'm concerned that we're already creating issues when there aren't any yet. And the last thing, we do have a council rep on the planning commission. And so I think if there's questions, there's no problem saying, "Hey, can you do that?" Also emailing the planning commission and saying, "Hey, you know, could we have these questions answered?" And so I think that... Communication, that's where it needs to go both ways. They are not to come to us on a constant basis. We go to their meetings, they come to us. Same with DDA, we go to theirs, they come to us. It's a group effort. It takes all three of us. That's just my opinion.
Well, on that note, I think it would be nice because these meetings are televised and available. And with my schedule and everything else, I cannot, like, be there to attend the planning commission or the DDA meetings. And I think it'd be great if we could also at least get those televised as well. And this is, I believe, this is the first month that we start getting the copy of the minutes. So that's a plus. You know what I mean? That brings us up to speed as well. But I don't know if anybody else is on board with that. I mean, even if they only have one camera or something, you know.
Well, that's the funds we have to pay. And to choose to do that. They're in documents on demand, and they're online every month. So we do have access to them, like the community, not us, but everybody.
With that being said, you know, I mean, what would the cost be? Maybe that's something we address later, but I'd like to know.
Yeah, what would the cost... I mean, I don't know what the cost would be by meeting.
At the meeting last week, there was one resident that showed up. One resident. And for planning commission, which, again, is supposed to be an involvement of many people, many thoughts, there was only one. One resident showed. And she had a hard time figuring it out because it was way in the back of the citizen leadership, which is something that's kind of important. I would think there would be more from the center.
From the center.
Not you shall be, I'm just saying. It's an important thing. And that's how many know. Many people get their information, basic information.
So it's not about tearing down the company that we selected. We did select it as council eligible to hire them. We're in it, we're in it with them. I'm just concerned about the methodology from start to finish as to how they went about it. So it's not about whether they can or can't do it. I think continuity, I think council needs to be updated. And, yeah, we are voted by our residents. And we are the resident first when we set up this council. We are council. We represent many residents. And in my mind, planning commission should be able to report out once a month to us on what's going on here. Why wouldn't they? They know we're all here. They know we need to be communicated to. They know we need continuity. We've been requesting continuity.
I would think that would be coming from our liaison. That's no different than his work committee or fire department or any of the recreation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That is important.
We have silence here, please. The councils just have a discussion. Thank you.
No, I would just... I would expect Tanya, who's the rep, to come back and tell us what's going on in the planning commission and give us complete run-through. I would expect her report to be as good as what the minutes would be. Isn't that the intention of having a liaison on councils to report back?
I think the report is to act... Go through, I mean, details that are not in the minutes. We have minutes. There's no point in repeating everything in a minute.
Well, right, I mean, it should be...
If there's questions or...
It should be, you know, then more thorough because everything should be, you know... The gist of the minutes, we should be able to capture the gist of the minutes. But, you know, unless our liaison on any committee's not going to the meetings, we're not going to be updated.
Great.
I'd like to add something also. I'm also involved in another master plan preparation for the Charter Township of Grand Lake. And I've noticed that there is a big difference between the way they are going about their master plan and the way we have been, okay? Grand Lake Township, at a joint meeting between the Grand Lake Township Board of Trustees and Planning Commission, was held last week to discuss not just the typical update to the existing master plan, but to have a joint discussion regarding the best way to prepare a new 20-year master plan. So this is the way that they have started theirs out. They have not even gone into the point where they're using a survey or social media at all. But they are starting out this way with a joint meeting. And therefore, I think that they will probably be, you know, more on the same page. And they're... Certainly, their board... Well, their township Board of Trustees will actually know what is going on because that's not been the case. The... They also emphasize what would be a recurring theme throughout the meeting, that input from the community is pivotal to the successful design and implementation of a master plan. And comments and information from the public is one of the most important parts of this process. Citizens will be participating in creating the master plan. Property owners, business owners, developers, investors, employees, and of course, everyone in this room will also be on this team. And I believe that that is the way that you establish the kind of communication between the Board of Trustees and the planning commission as you start out that way at your initial meeting. And I just wanted to bring that up because we're talking about communication and what has gone wrong here. And I just happened to be participating in another master plan development as well. And I noticed the differences between how things are being done here and how things are being done in the Charter Township of Grand Lake. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I also would just, for clarification, the survey is still in process, and it's anticipated to be completed by May 4. That's the boundary survey.
Oh, yep, you're right.
Survey's done.
Well, that was my question. Sorry, that was the way...
That master plan survey is done. So what you saw Thursday night is?
No reason for my question, no, then.
Any further discussions on the master plan?
No, except what I need to say.
I do... I mean, I... It would be nice to see the current master plan... Billy, you were just saying about, you know, we don't have to start from scratch. We could be tweaking it. But just based on our discussions, it appears that we're starting from scratch rather than tweaking it. Because I haven't seen anything that... Okay, here's...
They are starting from scratch also. It's that they weren't... Usually, they get together and start a charge of Grand Lake, and they do discuss tweaking it. And they've been... Because it's a 20-year master plan. But this one is a new, brand-new 20-year master plan.
Typically, just to... Even if you're going to wind up tweaking it, typically, just to get...
Review everything.
Yeah, people want to... Kind of want to do a clean sheet to kind of see if there is something that you're missing. You know, that it's that old. Real goofy on you. You've got a thing called a reticular activating system in the brachial brain. And that's that thing that allows the mother to lay in the bed or the father to lay in the bed every night. And you can have semi-trucks and ambulances go by, you know, all night long, and you won't hear. But the first time that baby pickups or something, boom, you're up out of bed. So your brain kind of categorizes stuff. Well, if you start... Same thing can happen if you're doing a master plan and you just go into it saying, "Hey, we're just going to tweak it." You automatically rule out...
Obviously, some things aren't duplicated, right?
Yeah. So you want to kind of get that creativity and stuff and goofy idea that might seem goofy at the time, but is a game changer.
That's a good analogy.
Yeah, and it's not... It's, you know, no different than any other master plan I've kind of participated in and asked. You know, yeah, you look at it from a clean sheet approach and try to see if there's something you missed.
Makes sense. Anything further? The next item on our unfinished business is being the Organville Wildlife Preservation Park Boundary Survey in sign quotes.
He is out there walking around. If you've seen him out in the backyard. I've got to track him down and put a bell around his neck because I haven't been finding him yet, other than by phone. So he was supposed to get it wrapped up. He told by last Friday and get me a finalized report this week. So I'm going to call him again on the phone tomorrow because I did talk with him Friday or Thursday. And I thought he would be all done, mistaken, doing what he need to do and going into the report by last Friday.
And as far as you know, is that the case? Or is he going to...
I've got to call him again because I said, "Hey, please stop by the office Friday when you're in town." So... And I did not see... He did not stop by the office. So I got on him then.
The weather might have been...
He said, yeah, he was dodging weather. And that not only there, but on other jobs. So because the weather screwed him up, this isn't his only job, so...
All right, and then it says in sign quotes. So signage, to me, is, I mean, you want to at least identify what the park sign would look like, right? And then what we put on it, and then establish quotes. So have you done what it looks like? And then have you done what's going to be on it?
We haven't done what's going to be on it. We know what we kind of want to do from the sign looks-wise. Liz, do you want to tell them?
I think what we had discussed was doing what other parks, you know, of the... I think what we had discussed was doing what other parks, you know, look at the dark wood sign with the white green lettering, and I did, actually through the insurance agency, find a company that has like a sign that's made out of composite wood, it would last forever, but we haven't really gotten enough, like drawing phase or even contacted them to get an estimate or anything like that yet.
Yeah, I, my thought is that, you know, a sign like that shouldn't be what's prohibited more than what's welcome, and to me, it's, you know, Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, hyphers welcome, something to that point, but, but I, I mean, if you want a list of all the properties, you know, I think you can use common sense on, you know, is a wildlife preservation park what that really means, so hopefully we don't go overboard on the verbiage to, to state what that really means.
I saw that as kind of a separate, a separate sign, thou shalt axe, or whatever. You know, and it's amazing, because a lot of the, and doing some checking with other wildlife preservations, you know, things that you wouldn't think of, you know, like no fireworks.
Yeah.
You know, if you got an animal preservation area, you don't want people shooting off fireworks at your stuff, you know.
Sure, sure.
What about, just something to think about is, you know, you mentioned about the drawings and the stuff that we opened it up maybe to anybody that's creative and have a contact of, of the signage, you know, maybe the general something.
I know Glover specifically said if it is not written, it is enforced, so I think we do have to have what we would like enforced there.
I also know that on some of the signs I've seen, there's the sign that Frosty Ashman was saying, kind of less is, and then there's a smaller little sign that you have to read that says you cannot do 19 of these.
Well, we already have a fireworks ordinance, so I mean, from that perspective, whether it's inside a preservation park, it's, we still have a fireworks, it'll be the day before or the day after.
So we definitely have village ordinances and blah blah blah.
But, but the, the ordinance is in place, I think the ordinance was well-written, and it does, it does detail what that ordinance is, and maybe we do put ordinance under, in accordance with ordinance number, whatever, so that we're not sitting there putting a big billboard on, which we can't do, right? I mean, maybe it's simple, but if it's in, the ordinance is enforceable and detailed, then, then I think they, I think they'd be smart enough to make sure that they're in accordance with that ordinance. So to me, it's about promoting the wildlife preservation and the open hiking there, all right? Certainly, we already designated that it wasn't going to be, what did I, what was it?
Orized trails.
Yeah, we're not developed trails, but certainly it's open for hiking for that wildlife preservation park person to be able to go out and experience wildlife, et cetera, in its natural state, so I'd like to, I'd rather promote that than all the negatives about the park, right? Of what you can't do in it, because.
The sad part is, Liz, in some words, you got to spell that out, otherwise, like Tanya said, Lieutenant Glover said, we, we got to make sure that we do spell certain things out.
Yeah, we got to figure out the best way. I, I understand what your thought is there, and it's important that, that people are Next item on the unfinished business is item C, that's the 2018 DNR Recreation Task Port Grant Application. It looks like we did get some feedback from that application, and they're just looking for some additional drawings that shows the concession stand as it relates to parking and walkability, and then also in relationship with the.
To the road.
To the road, right? So is that something that we'll reach out to Fred to do, does he already have those drawings? Is that what, Fred was supporting it, but?
He's actually going to have to sit down with me and help me with the drawing, because we don't have the software.
Oh.
He has the software that he uses, so he, it'll take him a couple of hours, but he can sit down with me.
He will help, he volunteered, oh, that's good. So for, for the public, it's Fred Wabrant, he's part of the Brandon Township Recreation Department Director, I think it is, and so that's nice that he'd offer to help that out, us out there. Any other discussion on that item? There being none, we have item D, Bill, I'm going to let you.
Just, I know this one's been kicking around for a long time, but I left you a copy of the, kind of the generic letter that we're going to send out to everybody. We have approximately 30 business, social organization, churches, whose dumpsters are not in compliance with our local ordinance. So the letter that I have in front of you is the generic letter that we'll start it today during the mail merge, and we'll finish tomorrow, and these letters are going out to the 30 dumpster owners currently in violation.
Does the Village of Ortonville get one of these?
Yes, we do, we get, matter of fact, we get two of them.
I just want to make sure that we're.
One's easy to fix, will be, the one at DPW will be fixed probably later this week, or pour in the cement tomorrow, all they got to do is move it inside their green and paced area, and they're moving on to the one by Mapleina Center behind the office, that'll be fixed hopefully next week, so yes.
Just a question as to why, since this has been an ongoing issue for a while, that we haven't even taken care of our own yet?
Well, since I've been here, the reason, the reason why is it's been winter, and.
Well, maybe you had some mild days too.
Yeah, the reason why is it's been winter, we ordered, we ordered materials and, and you need to have, you need to have two good days in order to get the ground appropriated so you can put down, because we're going to actually pour base to set the dumpster on, and then fence in around it, so, and that's been, that's been my kind of holdoff with sending out the letters, because until we could comply, it's kind of hard to get these guys, get business owners to comply if it's not that time, you know, so.
It wouldn't surprise me if you dug down too deep and got perma frost still, so I know the frost has to be out of the ground.
I know one thing we talked about was, I know it says all ordinances can be viewed, we talked about attaching the ordinance to it.
We are, that's just the generic.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that, okay.
Yep, we're going to enclose a copy of the, I think in the letter it says to enclose.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Percent.
Right.
So we're going to close a copy of that, we're going to work with them, I still haven't given the opportunity of maybe getting some vendors in here and see if we can't negotiate a group rate or some kind of way everybody can line up.
So this is just a draft right now, you haven't sent it yet?
Haven't been able to plan a mail-in.
Okay, I just got a couple of things afterwards, I'll.
Got you. Okay, we move on to the amended item of our agenda, which is item E, village manager, post-village manager, is that John Lyons, we have to put some closure to his services, and so we did receive tonight a memo from, from John requesting closure and response to that, so my thought is, and as we discussed earlier before we started, we'll have the, the personnel committee pull the documents that we generated to extend John's services, we'll, we'll do a little bit of fact-finding in terms of when we started versus when we ended, to make sure that we are full with what we owe John, all right? And then if there's any recommendations or anything that we find from that fact-finding mission there, we'll recommend to council, and I would hope that council would consider to approve, or at least give Bill feedback on the direction that he would go to, to put closure to John's services. I think, you know, I briefly read John's memo, and I got to tell you, he helped us out. We had a huge gap with not having a village manager, and I know when he was here, he even extended his time here when he, he was, you know, looking at retirement, et cetera, so I don't think that warrants overlooking that we're going to owe him, so it's important that we do, the personnel committee look at that, we look at it in detail, and then come up with a recommendation. And then I would ask, Conley, if you don't mind, send an email out to all council members, including, including President Wells, on the personnel committee's recommendation.
Okay.
Is that, any other discussions?
I don't know how long we've gone or what, I don't know, but we'll try to get together, personnel committee, wrap that up as soon as possible.
And hopefully it'll be before, it may not be before next meeting, I mean, we want to.
I'll make sure.
All right, any other discussions on item E? So the next item is item number 11, that would be Bill Sprague, village manager's report.
I think I've talked enough tonight, if you don't mind, I need to have much of it done.
You're a good thing, don't be careful.
I think I got a question.
I'd like to have a report.
We might make it a record.
Somebody didn't do their homework.
No, 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 we still have public comments.
Dog ate it.
Let's move on to item number 12 then, thanks, Bill. And then let's go to public comments, and this is for not, non-agenda items, so anything that you want to talk about, non-agenda related.
Come up there.
Come up to the, come up to the podium, state your name again, please, and, and what we, what you want to talk about.
Hi, council, my name is Carl Hayes. I would like to talk about, it wasn't on the agenda, but has to do with our master plan, is sidewalks down Oakwood Road. We've lived here now going on 31 years. When we moved here, we were told, and by some of the members of the village council who, it's been a long time, I couldn't even tell you who they were, but that, it was on the master plan for the village that there were going to be sidewalks put down Oakwood Road. Well, that was, like I said, 30 years ago. Are any of you familiar with the current master plan, and have they been continued through, that they're still discussing a sidewalk?
So we're, we're not in liberty to really discuss, this is for your time to talk to us, and so to, to keep a separation, certainly, you heard tonight that we talked about the master plan, the lack of transparency and what's going on, so at this point, we don't know what's going on with the master plan. We do know walkability's in there, so, and I'm sure we can put a, a bullet on there for the Oakwood sidewalk. Makes sense?
Well, I know, I know I'm only allowed three minutes, but I was hoping to share kind of my, my minutes with some people.
I took 20 seconds.
So interested for sidewalk, that was one, anything in the current master plan, that was two. Is this something that I would have to get put on the agenda to have discussion with the trustees?
Are you talking about items for the master plan?
Well, no, items for, for, to be discussed at a monthly meeting. See, I don't know who to talk to, who.
Who? It would, you would go to, Bill Sprague and Bill would, would feed that information.
Would you stop by your office?
Well, I would, yeah, stop by, because we're also in the process of doing a CIP, which is the.
Because I heard you mention about, you know, starting over from scratch on a master plan, or continuing, just tweaking a master plan.
Stop by.
I was wondering if, you know, did the sidewalks get carried through? You know, I don't know if it was a five-year master plan, a 20-year master plan, but gee, maybe they're still there, and we could just be talking about it now, it's not something that you had to add in, it's already there.
That's a good, that's a good point.
I'll stop and talk to Bill.
Stop talking, so I got an answer.
Now, I also have another thing, it's not on the agenda, and I don't know, I wouldn't want to put it on there, but we spend a lot of time walking through the village, and there's a few homes in the village where the dog mess, it's not from people walking the dogs, although there is a few of those around, but people usually clean up every house, it's a few of the homeowners allow their dogs to use the front yards, and they don't ever seem to clean it up, it's really horrible.
Big dogs.
We have to, we have to zigzag across the road, there's one spot where you can't zigzag opposing houses on both sides of the road.
So, so in that, in that case, again, you let Bill know, and we'll investigate, for sure.
That's another item I have to talk, stop by.
Or in our ordinance.
Okay.
And with the consideration of winter.
But I would like to respond just to the.
Oh, I said with consideration of winter, I mean, nobody could say they're.
No, no, you can't use winter as an excuse for this. Sorry, Tanya.
I should have.
Yes, I, I used to have a dog, and spring was, you know, no surprises, but this is a year-round thing.
But back to the master plan, it would be great to be able to fill the performing arts building over at the high school with residents only to talk about what we like in our master plan. It would be beautiful to hear from our residents, just like we're hearing from you tonight.
Well, like I said.
And I would hope that there is some type of plan that, that allows the residents only to come in and talk about their village.
So keep your list going.
Well, like I said, it was, I was told that it was in the master plan, and I can't imagine it being dropped out, although it may.
Well, as a sign known with it, that's the township and the village and the county, and it has been a big discussion quite often, it's been brought up in our meetings, the township meetings, it is a large amount of money that neither one of us obviously have set aside, and ongoing with grants and things like that, and it's been a discussion for years and years, so it's not forgotten, and it's definitely there.
It's a great priority. No, it links our community with grocery shopping, it links communities not just up to Church Street, but beyond, right? That, that sidewalk should go all the way up Oakwood to that final community.
Because of the dangerous spot there on Oakwood Road where there's guard rail on both sides, there's like a foot and a half to walk, walk on between the guard rail and the white line.
Yep, I agree.
Some of us are more than a foot and a half wide.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Those are excellent questions, by the way, thank you for, those are excellent.
And a foot and a half wide.
Especially with only going down at 35 in that section, just not quite enough to be there.
Okay, next, next item?
I'm sorry. Not on the agenda. Didn't want to get up before you were finished.
I'm sorry.
Matt Jenkins, Director of the DDA, I'd like to follow up on last month's meeting as it relates to the candidates we put forward for consideration for the board, the DDA Board. The DDA Board did have discussions about that throughout the past month, but last week was our monthly board meeting, and you did dive into the, to the topic and the issues, and I'd like to talk about a couple of concerns, and well, first, let me say I apologize for not being here to participate in representing the DDA last month, and I happened to be at the National Main Street Conference. But I do want to talk about a couple of concerns that you brought up, and if I'm off, please feel free to tell me about it. One of your concerns was our volunteer recruitment process, and another was the lack of outreach to village residents, just letting them know that we have openings on the DDA Board. As it relates to the informing the residents, thanks to the citizen and the article that was in there, as well as several social media posts, we, we received responses from residents interested in learning more about the DDA, potentially to become involved as one of them here. We haven't solidified anyone, we do want to put forward Paul Amori again, but decided not to do that at this meeting. We will continue to push for additional stakeholders to be brought before you, before we do that. But we will continue to engage the individuals who have approached us or responded to a couple of the outreach things that we did, and we'll try and, and fill them in on exactly what the expectations of the DDA are, what our goals and objectives are, and then if they are interested, we'll refer them to you through the village council president. In terms of the process, the organization committee for the DDA has been working on this process for quite some time, and they brought to the DDA Board last week a draft of a new process that they will be using moving forward, and that process is focused on identifying and engaging volunteers that represent a cross-section of the community. Stakeholders such as, in the DDA zone, the village council CEO, property owners, business owners, business employees, and residents in the DDA zone. Outside of the DDA zone, some of those stakeholders are village residents, active community members, representatives of different age groups, and representatives of some of the community groups in the village. In addition, last week, we asked the village council president to help facilitate ways that candidates that we've identified can meet you prior to a village. that candidates that we've identified can meet you prior to a village council meeting to try and increase the process of getting to know who exactly were interested in being approved for the Board. We currently have three vacancies for the Board, minimum of three. We can add up to six new Board members at this time. So we'll continue to evaluate some of these folks. Always open for people to express interest. It happens quite often, we'll get someone that'll respond to a email newsletter or an event posting or something, and then, of course, we go through the process of trying to engage them and meet with them, talk about the DDA. So we'll continue to do that over the next two or three months, trying to fill those Board positions. If at any time you have questions about it, or someone, or anything related to that, I'm always available. One last thing. Chainless plug. We have a luncheon learn, our third in our series for the year, which will be May 2nd, 11:30 to 1:00, at the Brandon Township Public Library, and the topic is legal issues for small business owners.
So, so Matt, before you, if I can leave you, just go on that note. You know, my, my opposition to Matt Outlaw and Paul and Maury had nothing to do with their, their reputation, their, the, what their services are to the community. My opposition had everything to do with, there was one sixth, that means one person out of the six people you have on your DDA represents the village residents, and that person is the president. That DDA is making recommendations to and making decisions for our residents that our residents have to pay for. So why wouldn't you want, when you called for a cross-section, that's what I'm looking for, your next three better be residents. That's the way I, I'm talking about me, I'm not talking about council, all right? Council might have a different view, but for me personally, I wanna see more residents on that. I wanna see our residents taken, engaged in what you're doing. You're doing great things, but when you hear them from the outside pushing them in, it doesn't work that way for me. It doesn't.
And we understand, and that residents have never been pushed aside or not considered. In fact, in January, a resident in, in the DDA district, which is much different than the village as a whole, we had a resident from the DDA district leave the Board. So certainly it is a stakeholder group, as I mentioned, in both of those different categories, in the DDA zone, out of the DDA zone, residents were first on that list, so.
You know, there's something I picked up on your comment. You said you posted, Citizen posted, you posted several ways, and you know what? You got responses.
That's right.
And the first thing out of your mouth was that they're gonna be a volunteer. You didn't say, we're gonna consider them to be a Board member, you said they're gonna be a volunteer. That's very similar to the gentleman that represented the DDA the last month saying, oh, we're gonna first, we're gonna look you over a little bit and see if you're board-qualified. To me, if a resident wants to be on that Board, it doesn't matter where, what Democrat they're coming from, what income they're making, or what street they live on, they deserve to be on that Board and they deserve to be spoken to. Those are good ideas.
All, number one, all of our Board, all of our volunteers attend our Board meetings. All of our Board members are volunteers. So I don't wanna split hairs, I hope it's not semantics. If we talk to somebody who expresses interest and they say they wanna be a Board member, that is the direction to go. If they say they wanna work on the Design Committee, that is the direction to go.
A Board member is a voting member, right? You have to have a quorum, right? And you, you push things through as a voting member, and that's what we're looking for. We have a lot of volunteers, you know that, Matt. We have a lot of volunteers in this community. Some have walked away for, for good or bad reasons, whatever, but, but decision makers, people that can help make decisions for this community as part of a resident in that, on that Board is what I'm looking for. I don't care how high Matt Outlaw sits in our school community, he represents our school Board and whatnot, and you know what? He's got a job and he's paid to do that job. We're looking for volunteers to sit on a Board that, to help build this, this community. And I hope you can see that this process will help you guys there. I hope that goes.
And I, for me, not that anybody cares, but my reason wasn't about the two gentlemen as well, it was about the process, not the people. It was just a way to, I mean, obviously we got somewhere by, unfortunately by, you know, not appointing them, but we certainly made some headway, it sounds like, and I think that's great. It's, you know, moving in the right direction. And, you know, I was kinda thinking about this too, it's like, you know, residents, you know, business owners, and then, you know, township residents, and I mean, you broke it out further by saying DDA zone and residents and then regular residents, but I think that, you know, priorities should be, and then if there's anything left, then maybe, but certainly residents should be first, whether they're DDA owner or not, and township residents and business owners. So you were, so you are saying, because I was on the website and I see that, because part of your recruiting campaign, for lack of a better word, said, you know, join the DDA. And so when I went, when I clicked that, so if this was part of the campaign, join the DDA, it took me to a volunteer form, and that was confusing to me, that it's like, okay, if I want to apply to be a member of the DDA, I don't wanna be a volunteer. They didn't show me anything that I could select, committee, this committee, or DDA Board member. I didn't see that, where it was a bit confusing of what, you know, what direction I wanna go in, if I can't make that selection.
Good feedback. That is a new website as of February, and so it's not as, it's not fully developed, so that's good feedback.
And so you just, okay, so just, so the, you're an ex-officio member, you're not a voting member.
Right.
Similar to like the village. So you need a quorum to, to, with your Board, the actual Board members, the volunteer people on the committees are committee members. They attend the meetings, but they don't make any votes.
Right.
You're only your Board, your Board members for a quorum to make any decisions.
Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Matt.
That's okay, I'm used to being overlooked.
Oh, no.
My name is Linda Hayes, I reside at 690 Oakwood Road. I have a couple of things, and my husband and I walk through this village a lot, and we have already talked to Bill about this. Speeding is a big problem in this village, and I'm looking to try to get better help, but I find my blood pressure just goes up and I'm screaming at people to slow down. I don't know what can be done about it. I think we need more stop signs, make people stop, because people turn from Oakwood Road onto Church Street and it's just zoom, right to that stop sign. I'm concerned, not just because of us, but I'm concerned because it's a village. The speed limit is 25, and these people are doing 40, 45 miles an hour here. It's incredible. So now that I have my blood pressure back up again, talk about that. The other thing that I would like to address, and I talked to Liz about this, we live on Oakwood Road, so we're probably, I don't know...
Quarter mile.
From, from the village here. I like to sit on my deck in the summertime on a Sunday afternoon and listen to my music, and I can tell you that I have had to call Oakland County Sheriff, which they called, that they can't do anything because there's an ordinance. I'm a 50s, 60s girl, I don't care to hear Crow Mary, Gloria, Mustang Sally from Dubai, and I can hear it. I can tell you what's playing, I can tell you what they're saying. I have no problems with them having that, but I think it needs to be turned down. I don't think I should have, that I should be able to be hearing at my house.
From the pub, you hear their music?
Yes.
From Oakland?
Yeah.
I hear it at my house, too.
Yeah. So I think it's a little bit excessive. So I don't know what the ordinance is, the...
What I was able to find so far is in our noise ordinances, for lack of a better term, there's a 10 o'clock at night to 7 o'clock in the morning noise, noise ordinance that talks about the noise that would be, in the way I'm interpreting it, is your property line can't be over 65 decibels from the offending source. So...
That's after 10?
That's after 10 o'clock at night till 7 o'clock in the morning. So I, I've been able, and I keep looking, and I, and I think you gotta use some reasonable reason, but I don't believe, or I haven't been able to find anything that affects the 7 o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock at night on a Sunday or something, you know?
Well, I'm talking about like Sunday afternoon.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, too.
And they're up, and I don't wanna take away anybody's thing that enjoys that, but it's kind of like, I don't feel like I should have to, to put up with it either.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying, is all I'm asking is just maybe if we could just give a consideration in there and where everybody can kind of be happy.
All right, thank you. Just in case I missed anybody, is there anyone else that we'd like to speak on, non-agenda? All right, moving on to item number 13, items from the trustees. Who do you like to go first?
Usually I do. I go down that way, but, of course, the, my subcommittee is the Old Mill and Historical Society. I went to the meeting April 3rd, and the Old Mill, you know, opened, as you know, on April 7th. And we, anyway, at the meeting, we were discussing what would, what the, what the Old Mill needed this year for their, and we decided, of course, they wanted a water softener, which we've taken care of tonight, and a new commode, and a new sink. So I think most of it's been taken care of tonight, if not all, so that was what we discussed, and that's what happened tonight.
Thank you, Karen. The Fire Authority Board did not heat this last month, but I will piggyback Karen's, the Old Mill, I had somebody stop by my house, actually Sunday, and they had never, they've been here a long time and they had never bought in the mill, through the mill. I mean, they popped in for maybe a supply in September Fest or something, but he's not by, just to say what a gem that we have, but a lot of people maybe aren't aware of. There's a lot of history, he's a history buddy, and I thought that's pretty cool. It's right here, you know, right across the street, basically. Thanks, Bert. It's good to hear.
I was gonna speak to the DDA about the Board members, I've already spoke to that. I would just let you know how we're coming on our permit update for the chicken ordinance, how that permit is coming along.
We, we should have that wrapped up this week, too. Just, I did meet with the building authority, and we're gonna treat that as a administrative review, so there'll be no cost associated with it. Bill and I both agreed that there's nothing in there that really takes racket signs, so I guess that's a slam of me, since I'll be doing it. So, I mean, take measure, I'm fully capable of doing that.
Following the requirements for the warehouse.
So, so there's, there'll be no cost to the residents, they'll just have to come in and fill out the permit, and we'll go from there.
And have you got any questions, Bert?
I got...
Because it's, well, the 30 days were...
30 days from the date of the publication, which is second Saturday after the last meeting, so it's...
It could be, yeah, we should be getting that wrapped up any time, so we'll come in, so we'll have to start, of course. And then, just the other thing, it's just, I will send Tanya and Wayne invitations to have a personnel meeting and just to finalize the letter of April 23rd from John. That's the answer for me.
Thank you.
Um, just a reminder, Thursday is the VGY Youth Awards, 6:30 PM at the high school. Everybody here has received a dignitary invite, we hope to see you there. Additionally, the planning commission meeting minutes were included in your packets, and if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Just as I mentioned before, I would love to see, you know, more of the private commission DDA, who's also Phil, we can review, I mean, like I said, my work schedule doesn't allow me to be over attended, but I don't know if, maybe, Bill, you could check it out.
Yeah, I'll check it out, see what we possibly know.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all I have. And I'm gonna keep it short, I don't have anything further to add tonight. Thanks for everybody's participation tonight.
Can I, just one thing I forgot, and I apologize, when we did the water softener thing, just like to recognize Judy Miracle did a great job pulling together all that stuff and really volunteered a lot of time to wait for those guys to show up and get the quotes and stuff like that, so I appreciate it. She's, she did the work, you know?
She did.
She should get the credit, so.
Absolutely.
There was, there's one other thing, Trust Bryce brought to my attention and a reminder, and it is a, it's a memo of recognition, and that has to do with the memorial donation to Grace Centers of Hope, and that has to do with the, the passing of Dave Van Dis in our community, and so there was a, a check written out to the Grace Centers of Hope as a memorial in honor of Dave's memory there. So that was a memo that Wayne did put out to the Grace Centers of Hope.
Can I just add?
I, I, I got one more thing. So it'll be the first time I admit it. Today is, today is Liz and Bob's birthday.
What?
For her to come in here.
And Bob Hawswell as well.
Yeah, 100 years. I appreciate it.
Thanks for sharing it with us.
Thanks for letting me.
Why'd you just get it all, right?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna...
It will be quick. All I'm asking is, it was brought up about these meetings and stuff, if the Citizen maybe could make a little block things, because that's where we get our information from, not the computer. So if it could just be not on the back page.
All right, I wanna thank Liz for the nice calendar that she put out for us, and the, and I think we detailed where she did on all the documentation for our meeting tonight. And then we have one last item, which is the adjournment.
Like to make a motion for adjournment?
Motion by Sormica, supported by Butsu on adjournment. Home favor?
Aye.
Abolished. We're done.